Call the regular council meeting for the Corporation of the Town of Cobalt on September 19th, 2023 to order at 6:30 PM. Disclosure pecuniary interest in general nature thereof. None? Three public meetings or none, four deputations, delegations or none. Five adoption of meeting agenda draft motion be it resolved that council suspend the procedural bylaw to allow motions to be introduced. Under section, I'm not calling to waive procedural. Procedure? Okay. Draft motion to waive procedure be it resolved that council suspend the procedural bylaw to allow motions to be introduced under section seven to add seven point two, seven point three, seven point four, seven point five and eight point three as they are time sensitive items. Draft motion be it resolved that council approve the agenda of the regular meeting dated September 19, 2023 as presented, need a mover and a seconder? For both? Counselor Anderson, Counselor Starcheck, any discussion? None, all in favor? Carrie? Approval of previous council minutes, draft motion be it resolved that council approve the following minutes as presented, regular meeting of council August 15th, 2023, many of the whole meeting September 5th, 2023, special meeting September 12th, 2023, I need a mover and a seconder? Counselor Cooper and Counselor Anderson, any discussion? On those minutes? None? All in favor? Carrie? Items for council consideration, notices, motion, Counselor Wilcox, there was a staff report attached as well. Draft motion be it resolved that the town of Cobalt purchase as soon as possible a used fire truck as recommended by our fire chief, provided that the fire truck is in good working condition and will not require a contribution from the town and see $15,000 to top up the funds already available to the fire department. I need a mover and a seconder. Counselor Wilcox, Counselor Cooper, any discussion? Counselor Cooper?
We see this a little higher than 15,000.
Okay.
Doesn't really get as much, but 20 they have, they're only sitting at 35.
Okay.
Last council approved 50, I believe.
Any other discussion? Counselor Wilcox?
If I may, I think I have a fire chief a few questions.
Need a motion? Fire chief Sean Herr?
Sean? Don't know yet.
I'll know later, can we?
Just a few questions, Sean, if you could help me out. In July, you gave us a report and you noted that our 49-year-old bumper failed and has been taken off. I understand you're still using it to transport equipment around, but not for firefighting per se?
Yeah, we're not pumping with it, it's because we have so much equipment on all the trucks, you can't pick it off the road, it's still roadworthy, it's just, you just can't pump with it, so that's why it's still going to fire scene, it's still a fire truck, you just can't.
Okay, thanks. When I heard that, I was thinking fire trucks might be like old people, after a minute of time, then we all start to sag, you know? Perhaps, think about, you said back in an earlier meeting that the fire department had about 11,000 put towards new engine?
We actually have 20, I think the town has 10, correct Steve? And we, and we have roughly 10,000. Last year, check of 10,000.
Okay. That's correct, 20.
Okay, that's, last word I hear was 11,000, so that's encouraging.
Well, I'm sure, while you're at it.
And I think probably for you, at least, my next question would be, have you been looking for used fire trucks?
Yeah, if you actually want to go deals.ca, they list all the new fire truck, that's when I'm fire truck, nobody actually did on it. And it was in pretty cheap, we actually received a phone call from the guy that does the podcast, he said, hey, there's a good truck, but obviously, we didn't have a, we hadn't gone to council, got a commitment, and then nobody did on it, it was, went and relisted it for 30,000 now, on, on, on GovDeals, it doesn't make sense, usually you list it cheaper, but, so, there's one on there for sure, I just don't know what it's gonna go for.
Any idea what year it is?
It's 2000, international.
So it's 23 years old?
Yeah, it's gonna, it's gonna be hard to find anything within that 20 year, because that's when most people are flipping them out when they're 20 years or older. I mean, there was one on there, it was a Mercedes, I think it was a 2005, it was in that 40,000, last time I checked, usually when they're hitting it's usually at the end where it skyrocket, it's up to probably 20, 30,000.
Well, how much money do you think you would need?
The only thing I would suggest is, if, like, obviously, I'm not asking for the world, but if you had it, say, you have to, say, if you were willing to contribute 25 or 30, you have enough for that amount, so we have like 50,000 to bid on, I mean, I would say we're looking for a truck for 50,000, if you get it cheaper, by all means, but it's just, it's gonna be harder at 35, to say, you know, if you quit bidding at 35 and it goes for, for 36, where if you had some kind of a cap, it might be easier to do it that way.
If I could, just make some comments for my own stuff, then?
Go ahead.
Yeah. I, I don't want to say our situation is dire, and I really enjoyed the staff's report on where we're at as far as qualifying with insurance companies go, and it's good to know our ratings aren't going to change, because we're down to the one fire truck. But I do note that the one fire truck that we have that's still working is 30 years old. When you look at the MPRA and the Insurance Association survey that they did, particularly the insurance one, they noted that fire trucks up to 15 years of age were able to respond to emergency calls 95% of the time, which is a great statistic, but then they go on to say they should be retired at 20 years, because they're no longer reliable to meet the emergency services reliably. Now, to my mind, is the biggest question that we have in front of us, is getting something that's better than what we have. I understand as much as anybody else that money is tight, but I think safety in the community comes first. I don't know how many of you have been in a house fire, I've been in one, and it's not pleasant, I can remember crawling downstairs, along corridors and downstairs at first, because you couldn't stand up, because the smoke was too thick, and I can remember being very happy to see fire trucks arriving when I was going out the front door. One of our firemen, Camino, took me over to his place and parked me over there for the rest of the night, but, so, our fire department stands by, that was really encouraging. My point would be, if you're in that, you know how terrifying fires are, and you know how much you depend on a speedy response and thorough and a professional response. Because they got there fast, they were able to put the fire on, save most of the house, took us a month or two to get back in, but nonetheless, that's because we had a great fire department in town, and it had equipment that worked properly when we needed it to. So, my feeling is, we desperately need to get another truck, if you got two trucks, then your odds are better that somebody's gonna make it to the fire, a lot better, and certainly a lot better than a 130-year-old truck. So on that note, I will rest, and if somebody wanted to make a an amendment to my motion to increase it to 35,000 or something, I would second that.
Counselor Hunter?
I have a question, and then. Because we only currently have the one truck, does that mean we're no longer part of this reciprocal partnership with other?
No, we're still part of the equally, the only issue is, if we ask Colin or Ellery they'll come and assist us, the problem with that being is we can't give it assistance, we can apply manpower to call on them, but we can't send their only one truck.
And I, from my understanding is that we actually have good manpower skills that other communities don't, so we're still valuable to other communities in some way. Okay, I guess my my comment is, just to put things into perspective a bit financially, that our annual library contribution is $30,000, and the purchase of a fire truck that will last multiple years, and right now, I mean, this motion is for 15,000. I don't know, I think a fire truck is pretty important for our, for our community, it's just how important is it to have a second one? It'd be nice if we could somehow share a second one with another community that might need a second one, I don't know what those options are, but just to think about how we're using our funds.
I'd like to make that amendment to bring our contribution to 30,000, which would top them up to, to 50 with their money.
So we finish the discussion, or is it on the other side? Okay, well, I have a comment, I don't disagree that a second fire truck is is very important. My concern is, if recommendation at 20 years it should be retired, why are we gonna sink 40,000 into a 20-year-old truck? Is that gonna be any more reliable than our 30-year-old truck? That's my first point, my second point is, how do you spend money when you don't have the money? Where do we take it from? So, these are things that you as a council has to consider. I know the budget committee's been reconvening, looked at the budget, trying to find savings, they've had ideas. There's been no conclusion yet, so we do have a fire truck that is responsible, and does go to the fires, does, the other one that carries the equipment. I just think it's financially also irresponsible to be spending money we don't have at this point. But, that's my opinion. So is there any other discussion on the original motion? Okay.
Well, that's what I was gonna say.
Yep. And so, there's a, an amendment to the motion, sorry, Counselor Wilcox?
Just wanted to respond to your comments. Firstly, we will note that the fellow who does our testing mentioned that we could probably sell 49-year-old bumper truck to someone for up to $10,000, so that alleviates some of that cost as well. You know, it's not like, it, it's, it's bonerous, I acknowledge that, but that 35 could be reduced to 25 with no problem. The when I googled what makes for fire trucks, when, when do they become an antique? And the answer to that was, fire trucks are vintage vehicles that had 30 years of age, so, we have a vintage fire truck that we're putting in the field. And I will say once again, if you're in a fire, an early response is about the only response that you want or need. I know talking with one of the fire chiefs from up north once, and he pointed out, the only thing worse than finding dead body in a house is finding two dead bodies in a house, and so much of that depends on how quickly they get there, and if they can go in and if they can save you. And that, to my mind, supersedes questions of all questions, to a very large extent. The benefit in having two fire trucks, obviously, is because then you have two shots of getting a fire truck there in a reasonable amount of time. A 30-year-old fire truck can be troublesome starting in the wintertime, it can have other kinds of problems, even when they're under 15 years, they only get there 95% of the time. And that extra time to find another fire truck from somewhere could be the difference between life and death for somebody in our community. And I don't think we should play Russian roulette with that argument.
I have a question for Chief Herr. As, have you ever had any issues with our trucks starting?
No, we've actually had a few issues, we actually have a battery charger that stays at the fire hall, just in case sometimes we're a booster, if a truck doesn't start. And my only concern is, just to clarify a couple points, buying a 20-year-old truck is not
Not way to replace the 30-year-old truck, it's replacing the 50-year-old truck, it's definitely gonna be more reliable, with more
Safety features in the truck, in a 20-year-old truck than it is in a 50-year-old truck. And I did wanna mention, as Doug said, that the other truck might be worth 10,000, if you find a collector, and I know it's in pretty good shape for, to, to sell to an NHE, so, yeah, so I'll leave it at that, I guess I.
Counselor Hunter?
I'm, I don't use my truck very often, and the battery regularly dies, and I have to charge it, so maybe it's good news that we don't use our truck often and the battery dies, maybe that's part of it, but I have some great news, which is that we're almost at the end of September, there's only three months left in the year, so we could potentially budget this next year.
Okay, once available, comes available in the meantime.
Well, sometimes you can do an offer to purchase based on January, or get like an interim loan, knowing, I don't know how all of that works on the financing end with the town, but next year is almost upon us.
Okay, so we don't amend it, we vote on?
We do vote on the original motion and then
Bring forward the new one?
We vote on the amendment first.
On the amendment?
Yes.
Okay, so, we've had a, an amendment proposed to the original motion to increase the amount to $15,000, so I need a mover and a seconder on the amendment?
Where is this money coming from? That's why I told, where are we getting it from, is it gonna be a loan? Where are we getting the money from, in our budget?
Well, let's vote on the amendment, and then we'll do the discussion, and then we'll ask that question again at that point. Okay.
So we amend it to 30,000?
Okay, I need a mover and a seconder on the amendment, Counselor Wilcox and Counselor Cooper. Okay, discussion on the amendment? Of 35,000, or 30,000?
I don't, I don't know if Dale or someone could talk to whether or not, since there's only three months really left in the year, by the time money changes hands, if there's a way to buy that something and just pay for it through next year's taxes?
At this time, our budget, we are coming across a number of items that have taken hit on our budget, insurance, and other items right now, we would have to put, if we want to proceed with this, our current budget for 2023 is extremely tight right now, if not, we're actually a little bit, and then I get a, of that budget. Possibly 2024, or look at other avenues of trying to get some money.
So a potential for 2024, is there?
It would have to go through a budget process, budget committee, everything.
Counselor Wilcox?
Counselor Hunter, for her suggestions, I would say we should pass this, and we should start looking for one, because there's no guarantee we're gonna find a reasonably priced fire truck in the next three months, it could well last into 2024, but I think the sooner we start search, and the more likely we'll be able to get one.
Counselor Hughes?
Did you ever do any fundraising, or fire department?
Chief Herr?
A little bit, well, we've already fundraised $20,000, prior to this, that we have in the kitty. Does that include our 10, or is that 20? Well, that's both, the 10s, that came to the town, it was a fundraiser to the fire department. Okay, okay, I was unaware.
And Counselor Starcheck?
I still wanna know where the money's gonna come from, I need to know, so I have a bank account that's in the negatives, how am I gonna draw money out of that to buy a fire truck, that's I wanna, if, I, with my per, or personal view, how do I do it, besides getting a loan or putting on credit, I just don't understand.
Pull from reserves.
We pulled from reserves, so we just pulled from reserves?
Yeah, we did. We did, there's a little bit left, but we're gonna have to increase taxes.
We'll probably pull from reserves next year, though, too.
Exactly.
Counselor, please, I have to, I have to counsel.
We, we definitely spent money this year before the budget was even looked at and put through, because I remember asking, well, we haven't even seen the budget, and it's like, well, you have to go on spending this anyway, so, I know that it is possible to spend money for a budget that is needed past.
Not, not typically this soon before a budget starts, because a budget doesn't get struck till March, April.
If council would like us to prepare a staff report on possible scenarios and
I, I think that would be our best course of action at this point, get a staff report on the course of actions, the impact of getting a loan, and the impact of that on our budget, and on our rate payers, and the possible increases. Yeah, that's what I was wondering, there are loan options, and if the right thing comes along, I think that's a responsible thing to do, because at the end of the day, we're gonna have to answer to the rate payers, going back for any increase.
But I also understand you gotta be able to bounce on things, or it's, it's gone.
Yeah.
If we're doing a staff report on that, can we do a staff report on the payment plans for a brand-new truck? See how that strings along, that's probably a 20-year payment at whatever per month with that.
Yeah, we could.
Rather than getting four trucks in the next 20 years, right?
Anybody wanna add anything further to that request?
Calling back on the safety issue again, our residents, we need a truck.
What?
We wanna tell the people that we're responsible, we're not gonna protect them properly?
You have to hear Mark, where the money's coming from first, Counselor Cooper.
We do have to do that, but we also have to, we have to protect people.
Yeah, and I think we'll wait for a staff report, we can make an informed decision, a staff report isn't gonna take months.
So do we miss out on a truck that's gonna close in, in a week or two weeks, or?
As I provided, a staff report here about our municipality, our municipality is graded under the fire underwriter survey as a 3A, and right now with that is giving one bumper truck. Not less than 3,000 LPOs, LPMs at 150, or 150 PSI, so right now, we, for a 3A grade for our municipality, what is graded through municipal, through the underwriters, is we have one fire chief and 15 auxiliary firefighters, we have all that, we've been into that category at this time, 3A. To provide the municipality with a second one, of course, but we are hitting municipal standards right now, through our insurance. If the truck starts.
Okay, so, um, we'll do a vote on the motion? Counselor Hughes?
Maybe we can put that on a triple charge, if that way?
No, we'll actually, I'm on a triple charge already, but I'm not sure.
I figured you'd cover all that stuff, that's what I said.
Any other further discussions on the motion?
Which motion are you looking at?
The amended motion? No? Okay. Okay, recorded vote?
The amended motion, 30,000.
Yeah.
So read the motion again?
Yeah.
Hey, be it resolved that?
I have a quick question for a start. We're waiting for staff report, and we're voting at the same time on the same thing, that's been, seems, are we gonna vote on whether we want a staff report, or are we gonna vote on whether we're gonna do the 30 grand? Cause I'd like to see a staff report before I say, let's go 30 grand, or let's see if we have a new truck, or?
I was the direction council, like, to take, are we gonna vote on the motion, or are we gonna wait a staff report and defer the motion?
I'd like to see a staff report, and I'd like to throw that new truck in on the staff report as well, just so we had a bit more numbers.
If we're adding a new truck, I, I just heard that the new truck engines are good in communities where they're used a lot, and we'll spend more time maintaining it than anything if we are in a small town that doesn't use it, so maybe there needs, I should do a review on.
We should do a vote, it was requested to do a vote on the motion, and then after the results of it, then direction.
Okay, so, we need to vote on the motion that came to the table first, and then we can give staff direction.
That's the amended motion, so it's not 50, it's a 30, okay.
Okay. Counselor Anderson? Against? Counselor Cooper?
Or?
Counselor Hughes? Counselor Hunter? Counselor Starcheck? Counselor Wilcox?
Or?
And Mayor Rad said against?
That was just the amended, amended, so now we go back to the original motion?
No, now we go back to direction to staff, to prepare a staff report, if that's the wish of council.
We didn't approve whether or not it would actually be amended, we're approving whether or not we would amend the motion, but the motion, your motion now still stands.
You amended to go from 15 to 30? Even though we already read the motion?
Yeah, for the 15, it's whatever council may wanna do on the 15,000, their choice.
Okay, so, I guess well, we voted on the amended motion, though.
Wasn't actually amended, it was on whether or not we were going to amend it.
Okay, we voted, that was on the amendment, okay. So, recorded vote on the amendment, now, you wanna do recorded vote on the motion itself?
Yes.
Or, do you want a staff report?
I'm requesting a recorded vote on the original motion, as discussed.
On the original motion, or the amended motion?
The amendment failed, so it's back to the original motion.
Okay.
Yeah, that's right.
Can I put a motion in saying we could table this for another, against a staff report?
Let's address this motion before we introduce any other motions?
I'm gonna shoot a motion, all that motion.
Right. Draft motion be it resolved that the town of Cobalt purchase as soon as possible a used fire truck as recommended by our fire chief, provided the fire truck is in good working condition and will not require a contribution from the town exceeding $15,000 to top up the funds already available to the fire department. Counselor Anderson?
Comment, now that we're back to the original motion?
Okay.
I, I would only note that we're back to $15,000?
Contribution?
From the town?
From the municipalities?
Yes, so, if we allow, we might get 10 grand for the sale of the 49er, and that would make it down to 5,000 bucks, and I don't think 5,000 bucks is a problem for the town to find. We haven't had one employee for a month, that's close to 5,000 bucks right there, you can save money. But, we're also looking, so, if we pass this, we have an opportunity to see if a good deal does come along and we can lock it up. If we choose to put it off for nine months, we're really in the middle of nowhere, and we might miss a deal, not saying we will, don't know, but I don't wanna take that chance, so at $50,000, I don't think it's a huge risk on us financially, I think it is a huge risk for the safety of our community if we don't.
Might I love the commenter?
Probably not, but go for it. No, I don't know, I just, I don't wanna be out of order here.
Yeah.
So, the, the truck that we were originally looking at was, was a 25, nobody did on it, they posted it back up for 30,000, and there's two days and something left on it, nobody's been on it. My suggestion would be, obviously, they're having
Hard times selling it, it's a truck, it's just the time of year, I think, they're selling it, if it doesn't
If it doesn't, go for bid. It's gonna be taken off and contact municipality itself. It's zero township. I find out what they're willing to sell it for. And you might get, you might get it for a good deal. Just if they've listened to it twice already.
Counselor Hunter.
And is 15,000 already in the budget? Didn't we budget? Didn't budget anything?
There is nothing in the budget, no. Okay, so any other comments on the original motion of 15,000? Okay, recorded vote. Counselor Anderson.
Yep.
Four? Counselor Cooper. Counselor Hughes. Counselor Hunter. Counselor Starchuk. Counselor Wilcox, aboard. And Mayor Rad said. I'm still gonna have to say again. It's gonna take time to sell a fire truck. So did we still want a staff report? Staff report? Hey, 7.2, new blower required for trackless staff report 2023-09-19-02. Draft motion, be it resolved that council gives staff authorization to purchase new blower for the trackless as per the staff report 2023-09-19-02. I need a mover and a seconder. Counselor Hughes, Counselor Starchuk. Discussion.
Can you fundraise for it?
Municipalities can't fundraise. Organizations can. Counselor Anderson.
That's. That would be, that blower would be able to go on to the other vehicle we were discussing.
This blower here in the budget originally was to get a new track. Cost cutting, we pulled the trap, just we're getting the current one repaired. Try for one more winter, but we definitely need a blower. The existing blower no longer works. It's unoperable. So. What? We're requiring is a new blower for our existing trackless.
And the trackless was originally in the budget as well as the blower?
Yes. We're payment.
Counselor Wilcox.
Just curious, what shape is our current trackless in? And we're, how much are the repairs to it?
It's currently being repaired as we speak. We don't have the full costs of the repairs yet. I tend to talk to public works superintendent. Remember things just to bring it up to for the season.
Counselor Hunter, you had a question?
Yeah, so I says originally the budget was for payments. Is this able to be on payments or we still?
We would have to pay this.
Any other discussions on the motion? Okay. All in favor? Carrie, oh. Carrie. 7.3, surplus municipal property staff report 2023-09-19-03. Draft motion, be it resolved that council declare the following property surplus and have them financially assessed. Number one, 14 Lang Street vacant lot. Number two, 16 Lang Street vacant lot. Number three, 8 Helen Street, a lot with a house. Four, 17 Urgentite Street vacant lot. Five, 21 North Avenue vacant lot. Six, 28 Laird Crescent vacant lot. Seven, 39 Watson Place vacant lot. Eight, 32 Pyrite Street North vacant lot. Nine is 35, 239? Pyrite Street North vacant lots. Need a mover and a seconder. Counselor Cooper, Counselor Wilcox. Any discussion on that? Counselor Cooper.
If we're gonna sell these off, that's not gonna be a surplus option, right? It's gonna go to a real estate agent?
This is the beginning process of it. First municipal, most desired surplus. And then from that point on, what occurs is we get an appraisal on each of the properties.
I'd like to see there a note on the Pyrite Street properties because the sewer doesn't go down that far. It ends quite short of those properties, so it'll be a possibility to municipality to actually extend that surplus.
Worship, a number of the employee properties here looking with, working with public works. Number one, 14 Lang Street, there is a curbside for services. 16 Lang Street also curbside for services. Eight Helen, there's actually a house on there, but it still has full services. 17 Urgent Street is a vacant lot, but most of it's on a hill, no services. 21 North Avenue is vacant lot, water sewer nearby on that one. 20 Laird Crescent is low service there, vacant lot, and it's mostly bad rock. 29 Watson Place. Or 39, I apologize for that. Vacant lot with no services. 32 Pyrite Street North vacant lot, no services. And also 35 to 39 Pyrite Street North vacant lot, no services at this time.
Counselor Wilcox.
Yes, Carrie raised an interesting point about the sewer. That's the far end of Pyrite Street. And it gradually slopes down to the lake going after the existing houses there. And I really am wondering if they can even hook up to a sewer there. Water doesn't run uphill. And it's bothering me. I know one of the houses that was more recently built there had difficulty getting a sewer to run well. That's just a very deep memory from a few years back. But it bothered me a great deal when I saw these ones also potentially up for sale. The other thing that bothered me about that was in our current official plan. The designation for rural property has been moved away from where it was.
Our previous official plan, previously it ended just at my old house at the north end of Pyrite Street.
Actually went right through the middle of my garage that was on the property there. And there was no housing, new houses able to be built between that rural section and the lake. Not just the 200 feet for the environmental assessment, but also because it was a rural designated property. And the reason that was done, and you know, that goes way back through most councils and only more recently have we seen a few lots be developed. But as Bruce Mullen from Knott's Hart and Freshies, the Northeastern office manager for that engineering firm, did have waterworks and headquartered in our station. I asked him what was up with the failure to develop Pyrite Street on the west side. And he said, well, it's a flood plain. Why would you build on a flood plain? And it's not any S of a flood plain because we have some houses on there and the ones that are on there are the lots that are posed. Are at the far end of the plane, which makes me a little nervous. The whole essence of the cold water act is to protect our water source. And if we're gonna start putting houses on there, well, A, I want to know for sure before we sell lots that they can hook up to a sewer. Because I would never approve anything going on septic or something like that, that close to our water. It's kind of. And yeah, I've got a whole, I'm not gonna vote for those two anyway. Because I don't think it's appropriate as far as good environmental controls go to actually build on that end of the street. Comes a time and place when the money you might get from a couple of houses isn't gonna be worth perhaps the kind of damage that could be done in the long return.
Do you have the zoning critically that we can act? Because I know some of these are also commercial, so they wouldn't actually be for developing a house. Just because you're selling it doesn't mean it's actually gonna be used for residential development. But my real question. I'd love to hear Counselor Cooper's reasoning by how he wants it sold and also my concern just with the extreme cost of appraisals. If that has to be the way they do it, I know Kirkland Lake has some surplus properties that they do put up like based on a proposal basis for people to purchase. Just, I just think it's gonna take a large portion of the actual value of the lot just to get it appraised. Whereas there's maybe a better way or a less expensive and equally beneficial way to do it.
As per our bylaw, 2014-06 states for any disposal of property. Property shall be declared surplus to the needs of the town one, and then the town shall obtain an appraisal of the property. So we're just following the steps here as per our bylaws. So right now we're just at the surplus. To declare surplus and that's all we are at now. And then appraisals after that.
Could we potentially amend that then to maybe get? Realtor opinion of value, which tends to be less expensive with supporting documentation is equally valid or. Putting it up for auction, then you don't have to, it's just whoever the highest bidder is, which is actually market value. So. I don't know. That's just something to think about going forward because it's between four and eight hundred dollars.
Right now the municipalities are just looking at ways so they can get some funds and this is trying.
All right. So we. Can I propose we get a staff report on the cost of an appraisal? But at this point, we go ahead and declare the property's surplus. It doesn't mean we're selling them at this point. It just means they're declared as a surplus to the municipality. Counselor Cooper.
Do you think we should get the water commission involved on these last two before we declare them? Home office for now?
I actually pulled the map out of the water act.
It's in our buffer.
Yeah, it's in the buffer area as well as the other homes on Pyrite are all into that same area. Because it goes right up to the edge. Still just prior here. Just close right to the edge. So it's just right on the edge of that.
Is it in the buffer or isn't it?
It's between the primary and. Unfortunately, I can't read this properly right now into the other area where it's currently in the same areas, all the other homes on Pyrite Street. In that classification. As well as Ruby and Dunning Drive.
And again, I don't think at this point, we're just declaring them surplus. We're not selling them and. It's, if they are sold, correct me if I'm wrong. It's up to the person that's purchasing it to ensure that they have the proper zoning and.
Worship.
They're not necessarily gonna build a house.
Once there's a surplus, the town shall obtain an appraisal of the property. Three disposal methods shall be determined. Four, council shall approve the disposal price. So it will still be coming back to council beforehand. And then at that time, public notice shall be given and then finally council will pass a bylaw to authorize the disposal of the property. This is just stage one.
Many steps along the way, yeah. Any other discussion? Okay, can we vote on the motion? All in favor? Carrie. Zoning by law amendment, Argentite Street train station. Staff report 2023-09-19-04. Be it resolved that council hereby acknowledges that the town of Cobalt is in receipt of an application for a zoning by law amendment. At Argentite Street, the Cobalt Train Station and direct staff to schedule a statutory public hearing. On October 17th, 2023, as required under section 34 of the Planning Act. Need a mover and a seconder? Counselor Hunter, Counselor Starchuk. Discussion. Counselor Hunter.
I think it's positive that anyone is wanting to do developments in Cobalt. I think my, my base concern that will also be raised during public consultation is the historic designation of the train station. And how the proposal is able to be achieved while respecting all the historic. Because it's pretty detailed what they can and can't do, even like. How they remove paint and what tool they use and it gets really detailed.
I'm just gonna give counsel a good backstory on this one. The owner applied and received a building permit in 2021 April for two units on the second floor of the building. This permit, permit, excuse me, was approved based on the zoning by law 2016-13. Property was zoned as downtown commercial, which allowed for two dwelling units within a non-reviled building. Zoning by law 2016-13 was repealed and our current zoning by law 2024-24 or 2022-24 was adopted on September 20th. Please note, the owner's building permit for the two dwelling units is still valid and the owner can continue if they do so. But under zoning by law 2022-24, the property is zoned as L1, which is like industrial, which does not allow any residential uses. The owner is applying to amend the zoning by law to allow for residential users, uses. To increase the dwelling units from two to four. So the first step is that has scheduled a public meeting as required under section 34 of the Planning Act. And then the next steps would be staff would send a public or notice of public meeting to all public bodies. This is including O and R Hydro Embridge. Property owners within 400 feet of the applicable property. Notice of a public meeting would be in the September 27th edition of the speaker. Then notice a public meeting will be posted in the town's website, social media account and posted on the town's. So it council approves the amendment at the public meeting of October 17th. A bylaw would be approved. And then staff would have to send a notice of passing to public bodies within the town of Cobalt, our homeowners within 400 feet. And anyone who has made a request to be notified. So and then notice of passing would be in September 27th, again, addition of the speaker. So this is a 20, there is a 20-day appeal process also. If no appeal is received, the property owner then can apply for a building. So that's the process of it.
Counselor Anderson, you were asking about the heritage aspects. When the building was sold. The owners were signing paperwork along with it about the heritage aspect. They cannot change the exterior of the building, you know, the colors, everything has to stay exactly the same. The interior, no part of the interior building was within that heritage designation. Yeah. You know, like we worked on it. I was foreman, manager for the project back when it was done. So that's the way it went. And so I'm all for it. Counselor Hunter.
I just knew that the zoning by law people are 100% separate from the heritage designation and don't know anything about it. So they would probably approve the demolition and construction of condo. Because they don't know the heritage aspect. So I just want to be sure that somebody's representing and ensuring. That a building permit is an issue that will allow heritage conservation not to be respected.
Counselor Wilcox.
Counselor Hunter has said it all quite well. Thank you.
I did have the opportunity to run into the gentleman who owns property. And he told me of his plans and he is. And he told me of his plans and he is respectful of the heritage aspect of the building. Yes, but he is actually keeping a lot of the historic structural items on the main floor. He's not doing a lot on the main floor, it's more just the dwellings upstairs, which I'm sure he'll address at the public meeting as well. Any other discussion? All in favor? Carrie? Seven point five Sally Lawrence and Rob Moore letter Cobalt sculpture upgrades. Be it resolved that council give Sally Lawrence and Rob Moore permission to look into funding and grants to complete the artwork on the Willett Green Miller Park with no financial support from the town of Cobalt. Need a mover and a seconder? Counselor Wilcox, Counselor Anderson, discussion? Counselor Anderson?
I'm looking forward to their continued ideas. They had expressed some of those ideas back when they first did that first part. They always looked at it as that was the first section. They do very good work and in them and the historical society, I'm sure they will be able to be coming up with financing. And while they're doing that, we should consider what we're going to do with the head ring.
That's a whole other discussion.
Yeah.
Another agenda.
Yeah, yeah. Another whole discussion.
I know that Steve and I met them. They're very excited, they're building wax models of their proposed work. So I want to look forward to seeing that and that's why they're pushing for, you know, our acceptance of their work so that they can go ahead and pursue all that funding, even for the initial stuff.
Yeah, I think they're a wonderful couple that are doing some pretty phenomenal work for the town of Cobalt. I'm very, very proud of what they've done and what they're proposing to do. One thing that struck me when I was reading that, they mentioned that the foliage above and behind would continue to be playing a role in their artwork. And I've noticed that we've got good old wild grape growing on those now. Could we possibly have public works rip out the wild grape so that those bushes remain?
Yes.
Thank you.
There it will be right across and coming in this building.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor? Carrie? Draft motion be it resolved that council accept the items for council consideration as presented. I need a mover and a seconder? Counselor Anderson, Counselor Hughes? Any discussion, further discussion on the items we've already discussed? All in favor? Carrie? Items for council information, seven point six township of Coleman noticed contribution towards their share of water charges at Tech Parks or at beginning in twenty twenty-four. Be it resolved that council accept the items for council information as presented. I need a mover and a seconder. Counselor Cooper? Counselor Hughes? Any discussion? Disappointment? Okay. All in favor? Carrie? Bylaw number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-one to adopt an encroachment policy for the town of Cobalt. Draft motion, whereas council received staff report number twenty twenty-three oh nine oh five oh two at committee of whole meeting July twelve, twenty twenty-three with the recommendation to adopt an encroachment policy for the town of Cobalt. Now therefore be it resolved that bylaw number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-one being a bylaw to adopt an encroachment policy for the town of Cobalt read a first and second time on July eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Be read a third and final time and passed this nineteenth day of September, twenty twenty-three. And further, that said bylaw be signed and sealed by the mayor and clerk. Need a mover and a seconder? Counselor Hughes, Counselor Starchuck? Any discussion? All in favor? Carrie? Bylaw number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-five to adopt a water utilities management policy. Draft motion, whereas council received staff report number twenty twenty-three oh nine oh five oh three at committee of the whole meeting, September fifth, twenty twenty-three with the recommendation to adopt a water utilities management policy. Now therefore be it resolved that bylaw number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-five being a bylaw to adopt a water utilities management policy for the town of Cobalt. Be read a first and second time this nineteenth day of September, twenty twenty-three. Need a mover and a seconder? Counselor Hughes? Counselor Wilcox? Any discussion?
I was like a question here. What's the difference between this? The bleeder shall be installed after the meter or the bleeder should be installed after the curb stop now?
We don't have meters.
Okay, that's makes sense, yeah. It's at everyone's house then, we're talking about the bleeder or what?
The only meters we have are between us and Coleman.
Few meters, right? So the bleeder will be installed where?
His house now, where it comes in from the curb?
It's just mentioned in here. I didn't read it.
At the curb stop.
Yeah, but how many of these bleeders are we gonna put in, a thousand or just one? Just one bleeder? Zero. Okay. I don't know, there was a much on this page.
It's in the bylaw.
And four.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor? Carrie? Trying to cut the meeting short here. Bylaw number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-six respecting destruction, demolition and change of use permits and inspections. Whereas council receive T S M A report with the updated fee schedule effective October first, twenty twenty-three and provide public notice. Now therefore be it resolved that bylaw number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-six being a bylaw respecting construction, demolition and change of use permits and inspections. Be read a first, second and third time and finally passes nineteenth day of September, twenty twenty-three. And further, that said bylaw be signed and sealed by the mayor and clerk. I need a mover and a seconder? Counselor Anderson, Counselor Starchuck, any discussion? Counselor Wilcox?
Just a question because housing and all those good things are all in the news today. A lot of politicians are making a lot of hay commenting on the difference. These fees that are now fixed, I believe they are cost recovery and they're not paying to make a profit or anything?
The old method was the T M S A would build a town for the same amount of town collective in the building permit fees. Well, now T M S A is now obligated to charge H S T, which the town cannot collect from a building permit fee. So therefore, T M S A has recommended that each municipality adopt the volume building permit fees, which allows a municipality to recover their H S T recoverable amount. T M S, T M S A has covered the actual cost of municipality with the rebated H S T component for each fee. Fees would be rounded to the nearest five cents per square foot fee by all for the fix fee. So it's just a recurring cost and still it's a loss.
Still enough for profit, thank you. Any other questions on the bylaw? Okay, all in favor? Carrie? Nine unfinished business, there is none. Ten new business, ten point one schedule of accounts. Be it resolved that council receives the following schedules as presented. Schedule number twenty twenty-three dash sixteen in the amount of a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, a hundred and seventy-three dollars and thirty-eight cents. Schedule number twenty twenty-three seventeen in the amount of a hundred and forty-two thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars and seventy-two cents. Need a mover and a seconder? Counselor Anderson, Counselor Cooper? Any discussion? All in favor? Carrie? Ten point two mayor's report. I've heard numerous times since I've moved back to Cobalt that people want Cobalt to be what it once was. And so would I, or as close to as it could possibly be, as I'm sure everyone else sitting around the table feels the same. I've heard some really good speakers about how to make your town better. And the one message that keeps coming across loud and clear is it begins with the people. So with that thought in mind, I kept pondering, how do we do this? How do we get the people involved? And this is what I've come up with the stars down the path. I issue a challenge to all residents, young, old and in between. Come up with what you love about Cobalt, write it down along with your contact information, submit it to the town office and I will contact everybody who submits to discuss their thoughts on what makes our town great. And the first eight submissions will receive a small token of appreciation for participating. Let's start a positive dialogue about what is so wonderful about the small town that we live in called Cobalt. And if you don't want to submit an idea, share what it is that's so wonderful with your neighbors, with your friends, on social media, but most importantly, let's keep the message positive. This is your town and it will take more than seven enough, seven of us around this table to make our town into what we want it to be. It's going to take all of you as well. In order for that to happen, we need you to be engaged. We need the public to come to meetings, speak up to your friends, to your neighbors. And if you so choose, social media, but let's keep the message positive. Negativity does not help us change our town into what we want it to be. So please, let's all get engaged. And I'm gonna start off the conversation by telling you what I like about Cobalt, why I think it's so wonderful. It's the people, the way they pull together to help each other out when it's greatly needed. And the fact that we live in a town with all services that provides, yet we still have an abundance of nature surrounding us to enjoy creating a relaxing way in which to live our lives. And that's what I love about Cobalt. And that's all I have to say this week. Eleven, closed meeting, draft motion. Be it resolved that council convene into closed session as per section two thirty-nine of the Municipal Act two thousand and one as amended in order to address a matter pertaining to subsection two A, the security of the property of a municipality or local board. I need a mover and a seconder? Counselor Cooper, Counselor Hughes? All in favor? Carrie?